Where is he?
That's who I was asking Karen.
All right, seven o'clock, we'll call our order to start the pledge legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, start with phone call.
Okay, Monahan.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
On the phone, and absent with notice is Mayor Menning, Keel, and Brennaman.
All right, any additions or changes or approval for the agenda?
Most approved agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vaughn, did you say aye?
I did.
Okay. Motion to approve minutes from the previous eleven-two meeting?
So, move to second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Approved bills submitted for payment?
Most approved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a few questions. Craig, refresh my memory, why do we buy our tires at Goodyear and then have Cameron put them on?
Because we get them on the state bid price.
That's what I thought. And how many weeders do we go through a season?
This is the first one we've replaced in two years, three years.
Good? How many do we have?
Three.
I had asked two questions earlier when I was down here going through the agenda with Teresa. Invision payment is our second, you said, out of five. And dumpsters, did you find, what did you find out?
Yeah, this year compared to last year, overall, we're down about forty-five hundred dollars. Three thousand of it is in dumpsters and fifteen hundred is in the monitoring, which is the staff, the camera. There probably will be a few more cellphone, or, excuse me, dumpster bills coming in in December, I would imagine. But we're done with staff.
Okay. Because we run until Thanksgiving?
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
All right.
What probably helped in the staffing is that, well, we had one person that was volunteering helping, so we weren't paying out any wages to him.
All right. Any other discussion or comments on the bills? Already have a motion and a second. Full vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right, we're gonna move to public comments on input on non-agenda items. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Anybody wanna talk? All right, we'll move on. Special event application for Hartford hometown Christmas.
Most approved.
Oh, so if you want to come up and talk, Lisa, you can. Since you're here, if you want to come up and talk, you sure can.
That's the easiest.
We gotta kill two more minutes until seven oh five for our first resolution or ordinance.
I would just say that the city council should plan on putting a float in the park if I'm not wrong.
Okay, oh, you got plenty of time.
There's a motion, so we really should.
Oh, yeah.
Until we have a second.
Okay, second, now we can, okay.
One thing I just want to clarify, do you want the use of like the city building again, because that wasn't in the application, so? If we're gonna pay out wages, then we need that. I just want county to know that's a part of it.
Staff, yeah.
Yeah, same as.
Are you bored?
You have any amendment motions, Teresa?
Yeah, to include that, just so it's clear.
Oh, amendment motion to include paid city staff and any city facilities that need to be used.
Lisa, one second.
Second, yeah.
All right. And you'd like to have the city or city council have a vote. We did that one year.
You did?
What year was that?
We rode on a flatbed, right?
I don't know, I made a float for you guys.
Yeah, Jeremy and I.
Yeah, we rode on the flatbed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wonder what that was doing?
Probably not on the float.
Not on the float.
Yeah.
You didn't even miss nothing.
I did. All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Yep, and I'm a yes. Thanks, Lisa. Thanks for your committee, everything you do. We're at seven oh five, notice of public hearing for renewal of liquor license. Teresa, anything you need to add?
Nope, Karen's put together the list, and these are all just current liquor license that are going to renew. It doesn't include the new one that we have coming up. These are just renewals, no violations that I'm aware of. Karen's collected all the applications and all the fees and got everything in order.
Making most to approve the liquor licenses as presented.
Hold second.
Yeah. Oh, you can give that one.
Here.
Yeah, give that one away. Discussion. Not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Oh, shoot, now we gotta kill some turn.
Without a farm, you have to set his time. Fire department.
Yeah, we'll go to fire department and report.
Yeah.
Matt, you wanna give your report?
Sure. So, for October, twenty-two total calls, ten in the city. We kinda slowed down a little bit last month, but it looks like we're picking up again in November again. Training for November EMS is gonna be iGel airways. It's a different type of airway that we can use, we just gotta prove to use those, so we're gonna get everybody trained on how to do that. Fire training's gonna be electrical emergencies. Woody Sue Valley Electric is gonna come out and give a class. And not much else, we handed out the glow sticks again on Halloween, which we got a lot of good feedback from, so I think we'll try to resume that every year.
Yeah, I seen you go down our street, so.
Yep.
Got everybody warmed up. So, any questions for Matt?
I just want to say thank you, Matt, for doing those, you guys doing those necklaces and all of that. I think it means a lot to the kids for the tri-plant training, so thanks you guys for doing that.
You're welcome, we are happy to do it too, because I think it's safer and they put them all on and they're a lot easier, more easily visible with those things around their necks and stuff at dark.
I only found two or three of them in my yard.
Those weren't ours.
All right, good enough. Thanks, Matt. You bet. Amy, I don't know your two-minute report, are you?
I don't know.
No.
I got it.
I couldn't be.
Could you? Okay, go ahead.
The only thing I need to add to my report is the ring is on the main tane, we got that rid of all. Main lift station, we did have a check valve, actually about six o'clock tonight I got the call on that, so. Got that pump shut down, for now, we'll get it fixed tomorrow, we do keep spare parts for all that stuff around. Agroline, we've got about two hundred tons left to haul, and we have been pulling some trucks when the elevator has their scale open on.
Yeah.
Elevator's been way behind as far as staffing this year for some reason, so we've been trying to get them ran through. Everything's been looking good, that's all I got, someone's got something for me.
I see we had one bill or, was that for the start of the agroline, or is that?
Yeah, I don't know why they said one bill, because that was just one truck.
Yeah. It seemed funny, because it was like a thousand bucks or something like that, it seemed kinda odd.
Hey Craig, are the ponds gonna be empty? I think I, when driving down the interstate, it looked like there were two or three were pretty full.
Yep, we grabbed samples last week, we're waiting for the results to see if we can discharge or not.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get the results back, I was gone this afternoon, but Jess was getting a call in this afternoon, so we haven't heard, seen nothing yet. Just to find out if they are, if the results come back good, then we'll contact DNR to get permission to discharge.
Okay, okay.
Gary, did the new generator get fired up?
Yep.
Everything went all right with that?
Yep, everything's running good there, so, yeah, they had to make sure we're in the right direction, everything sets us three days, it's good. We should be final with that here, completely.
All right, anything else for Craig? All right, I see we're at seven ten, we'll move back up to the rezone hearing. First reading ordered at seven twenty for lot ten, south of highway thirty-eight.
Making most to approve first reading order at seven twenty.
Okay.
All right, discussion. Teresa, anything you need to add?
Nope, the map's in your packet, basically, yeah, it's lot ten, it's south of highway thirty-eight, and then the east eighty foot of lot seven. Both, right now, they're both residential, we'd like to rezone them to community commercial.
Looks like all the fees were paid, all that stuff is good. And you said planning and zoning?
Yep, they went to planning and zoning last week, they all voted for the rezone and recommend one.
And word back from DOT, or is that the property owner with the?
That property owner is working with the DOT as far as getting access.
Yeah. All right.
As the highway thirty-eight, we don't govern that though, it's not just.
Yeah. All right, any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. We need to stay a little longer, now we're at seven eleven. How about a four-minute report?
I can try that, just don't ask questions, promise. Okay, so my report is in the packet. You know, we have the hometown Christmas breakfast that goes in line with the hometown Christmas. We did put the marquee up and we, I was told seven thirty to ten thirty, and I found a list at seven to ten thirty, so I'll go back and take the three off, make it seven to ten thirty.
Okay.
We'll get that corrected right away. The development foundation has a billboard that will be getting put up. I talked to the gentleman that will be doing that, I told him to hold off because another business owner here in town is also doing a billboard, and I think it'd be better just to have one car, truck, whatever, go out at one time and do both billboards versus having them multiple times. So, we're gonna hold off on our billboard for maybe a week or two. And then you graciously, the council approved me to go to Tucson, Arizona in January. Due to scheduling conflicts, I will not be able to attend, so I will look at a future date and then look back at maybe coming and ask them for permission again.
Would you like me to fill in for you?
Sure, do you understand the chamber world?
Tucson, January?
Yeah, do you understand the chamber world?
Oh, I could take your telling me.
You probably could, so you go for it. Do you have your shot? Do you have your shot? It's mandated, okay.
So, you really shouldn't ask me about the hit laws.
Well, no, I'm saying if you wanna go, you have to have a shot, so I would get you in touch with them so that you can go, but if you don't, you have to get the shot two weeks prior.
Oh, yeah.
So.
How long?
It's for four days, five days? Fifth through the ninth, but you should get there on the fourth and then.
So, I'm gonna do is take notes for it?
Answer questions and maybe a test or two.
Answered questions?
Uh huh. Last week, they kinda put you in test pods. Okay, just call me and then I'll answer the questions for you, send me tests, I'll help, yeah.
But just so we're, just so we're clear, then you don't get to go when you ask again.
Correct, that's fine, as long as he wears a wig and says he's me, I'm fine, so I get my certification.
Now you're going after my personal appearance.
I just can't win with you today, can I?
Anything else, Amy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, good, I'll give you my report. She's gonna give you my report.
Well, I could add a little bit more, we had both annual meetings last week.
Give it a plan.
Well, we know when you think your parents' report, you always say, yeah, nothing to add. Yeah, listen, we got, yeah, we got a minute, okay, Karen, anything you need to add here?
No, nothing to add, it's pretty dry, boring.
If you'd like to go, being as hard as we're killing a minute, dude, if I could go back, as I'm looking at this application for voting change twenty dollars, is that not one of the fees that we changed?
Yeah, but they're not effective until the eighteenth.
The eighteenth, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, Thursday.
Because every time we get something, I'm like, oh, that looks cheap.
Yeah, they are real cheap, that's what we changed.
Everybody's squeaking under the deadlines.
Yep, Thursday's the effective date, so, anything after that, Lord, will be the new fees.
Karen, you said nothing else to add?
Nope, nothing else.
Any questions for Karen? All right, looks like we made it to seven fifteen. We'll jump back up to our seven fifteen hearing to review and approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, the extension of the farm lease.
Making most to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven for discussion.
I'll second.
This is same deal we had last year, right?
Yep, and the exact same deal, so it's extending that same conditions and agreement that we had with our farmers, same farmer, same amount per acre that we had last year, just to spend one more year since we, you know, will not be, we know next year we won't be doing construction yet and we need a few soil borrowings, but we have, we're working in the agreement that we can go in and get those, so.
Good.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion on that? Not, we'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Yep, and I'm a yes. All right, David Knox, that's the engineer report.
Yeah, so we get your report in front of you, no major modifications on that. Six in one, we've got that survey wrapped up and we've got folks actually putting that together right now. So, it's one of the big items. We did get that Vance Peterson letter sent as well, haven't heard anything back yet on the feasibility study and actually the facility plan. That will be finalized here shortly and that will be actually submitted to the A and R. Your SRF application has actually been submitted, so that's good. And we'll hit that January first submitted deadline for the facility plan. Community development and downtown plan that continued, we have had a conference call last, was it last week already?
Yes, last Thursday, I believe.
Yeah. And making quite a few of the modifications there to the actual plan, and we'll get that updated and then we'll be able to get that backed out. The main item that we have in addition here is our recommendation on Western Meadows Phase Four. We did review the punch list, it looks good, they completed everything, they got it seated. We went through that one more time, and we do actually have a recommendation that that actually can be approved moving forward and a resolution prepared to accept improvements into the city of Hartford.
In our discussion this afternoon, Teresa, she explained that this is a new policy that we're putting in place that when we accept infrastructure ownership, I don't know if that's the right, probably the right word. Infrastructure ownership and from developments, we are now gonna pass a resolution so we have exact dates of when we take that ownership and when that happens.
Previously, you know, developers had finished off development, we just kinda took over the infrastructure, we never really had any formal action or no concrete date of developer is responsible to here and the city took it over at this date, so we've kinda talked with ISG. Going forward, I'd like, you know, once they notify us that they've got it completed, they've got the punch list items done, engineers will verify that everything's done to our design standards, and then we will, yeah, pass this resolution going forward and accept it into the city as our part of our infrastructure.
No problem.
And they actually have a, this would signify the maintenance period that it started as well.
Right, because then we have a firm date of when, you know.
You take over, we take over.
You take over, for sure, but then.
The one they're.
The one you're.
There's a one.
The one you're warranting, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we have concrete dates, yeah.
Yeah. All right, anything else, David, or we'll move to that.
I have one, I'd like to get an update on the existing approach on the highway thirty-eight from track one of the Hartford Hills addition.
Facility plans being submitted?
Sid, before we jump there, don't we need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Based on, well, let's see, I don't know. Making a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen based on engineer recommendation.
Hold second.
Any more discussion on that? All right, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. Gary, as to your question, it's something that's not on the agenda, what is the, you're wondering about?
I'd like an update on what happened, any new findings on the existing approach from track one of the Hartford Hills on highway thirty-eight?
We're in discussion.
You're working with the LEAP on that?
Yep.
I don't think we have an update to give you right at this time, correct?
Dave, you're not, the project's not decided.
Let me stop, because I don't know what track that is, so, because what piece of property are we talking about?
The sewer property, wait, what else am I here for?
Well, that's what I thought, but I mean, literally, we just got done talking about Western Meadows addition, and then you jumped in on the approach.
Well, this was a question for David, and it was the end of his report, I didn't know anyone else to bring that in.
Okay, that's mine.
Because there was progress on that, and I guess I was curious what the progress was, there was, so you're saying that there's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna give an update as to what you found out this week?
They're having discussions with the DOT, that's the update.
Why are they having discussions?
They're weighing their options in regards to what they want to access. They have an access easement. You wanted to say exactly what you mean?
I mean, the state has said you don't have an access easement on the highway thirty-eight.
There's a.
Amy took the phone call.
There's a permit directly in there, it states that they would need a permit.
Yes.
And we were under the understanding that they're gonna need a permit. And they don't need a permit for the other location that they have access.
Forty-four, yeah.
Not for track two, but for track one, you do not have a permit to come on the highway thirty-eight. Why can't you guys admit that? You will not admit, you do not have access, you do not have a permit approved to come on the highway thirty-eight from.
We just said we don't, we just had a very discussion.
So, you're talking about track one on the north side?
You told me last week you had, it was all cut and dry, you had access on the highway thirty-eight. You do not have access, so I'm asking you to expound on that. Why do you not have access?
Because they have to submit the permit to get the access.
And we haven't designed the plant.
And we haven't designed the plant, and we haven't designed the access. Have we designed any of the facilities?
If you are gonna tell me, then just forgive it.
Gary, what Amy did you talk to, because I didn't take a phone call on this.
Which one is?
Somebody called and said they talked to Amy and explained why you do not have an access on the highway thirty-eight.
I don't take those calls unfortunately, sorry.
Okay, then I don't know who they talked to.
Track one is on the north side of the interstate?
South.
Track two is on?
North.
North.
Yep.
Track two's on the north, track one is on the south.
You have specifically told me over a dozen times that you are gonna come out on the highway thirty-eight and you will not be using four hundred sixty-six avenue. That is not true.
They have an interior, let me, let me just, let's just, I just wanna talk to you. And I don't care what the state said, and I don't care what, so let me just talk to you. So, right now, our property abuts, the north side of the interstate, we're talking about track one. On the north is the interstate. South of that piece of property is privately held land that we do not have an access through, correct?
Correct.
I believe that land is owned by?
MacMullin.
MacMullin?
Yep.
Correct.
So, our land to the east, or our portion on the east side of that borders highway thirty-eight, correct?
Correct.
And in our portion, there's a field approach, correct?
Incorrect.
There's not a field approach.
There, we never meant field approach, I tried to tell you guys that last week, and you keep telling me I'm an idiot.
So, there is not an approach there, how many times do you guys have to tell me that?
There is.
There is not an approach, look.
There's not an approach there.
Yes, there's no kind of approach.
There's no kind of approach there.
We do have access through Mac's land, though, easement.
We do have easement.
Yeah, we do the highway thirty-eight.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I want, I want the council to know.
Gary, just let me ask a question. On Mac Mollin's property to the south of the box?
Yes.
Is there a field approach there?
Yes.
That goes out to highway thirty-eight?
No, it goes to the.
There's no field approach?
Nope.
From the bridge on the interstate to that township road?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
So, they access that field right now from the township road?
Correct, four sixty-four, about three hundred, about three hundred feet, so.
Something that, yeah.
Yep.
And that's their, that's their current field approach, and we have?
Off the township road.
Yep, and we have an access easement from there, all the way through Mac Mollin's to our property.
And right now, we are currently in the process of permitting off highway thirty-eight to our property.
We're working with.
That's what we're working in conjunction with the DOT right now.
If that is not done?
Nope.
Yep.
And most certainly, we've outlined that there's an expressed desire by the folks from, in that particular area, that they don't want us to access that, so we most certainly want them.
Well, and I mean.
Not that you have to, you have an access easement onto the township road, but I know that there's most certainly a desire to do that, absolutely.
Well, I understand your frustration here, and I don't know, I honestly, I don't know who you're talking to at the state, I don't know who you're talking to with the county, I don't know who you're talking to with the city of Sioux Falls, and quite honestly, I really don't care. But I'll tell you what I do care about, is you come down here and start slinging accusations about people lying and people making shit up, and I'll tell you what, I've sat here a long time, and I'm not gonna lie to you, and I'm not gonna blow smoke up your ass, but I'll tell you what, I'm also not gonna sit here and let you condemn me as a liar.
I specifically asked these guys at the last three meetings, has the access been approved? I specifically asked Arden, every answer that I got was, of course it has, because it's on our picture. I had to go in and call the state and find out on my own that you do not, because Travis sat there and made fun of me, because why would they use my road when they aren't even coming out on my road? And my point is, I'm tired, I'm tired of being lied to.
Well.
You guys, you guys think that you know everything, and I've told you there's no approach there, you argued with me last time, you broke out your picture and you said it was all approved. I called the state, so I want the council to know that what I'm doing is making sure you're aware of what's going on. You guys, Travis promised me he would not use four hundred sixty-six avenue, and now you are coming out on four hundred sixty-six avenue, because that is your only option.
See.
So, don't tell me I'm calling you a liar.
But you throw things out there like they're the truth.
It is the truth.
But you say we're coming out on four sixty, whatever it is.
You are, that's right now that's your only option.
We're not even there yet, we're not coming out there right now, because we're not there yet. Let me, let me just throw out some things that might happen. We might get a permit out on the highway thirty-eight. We might have to use Mac Mollin's easement, and maybe we can get out on highway thirty-eight effect. We might have to go to the township road, but in the event we do, maybe we'll asphalt it, maybe we'll, maybe we'll concrete it.
Well, Travis specifically told me that that was not your responsibility.
Travis is in the city of Hartford.
Well, he's, well, you guys are telling me, you're telling me that that is not your responsibility, and I'm telling you, I live there, whose responsibility is it?
I can tell you right now, as long as I'm sitting here, that's not my plan.
Exactly.
If I'm sitting here, I'm not saying, yeah, let's go down to the township road and shove it up Gary's rear end. The way I'm looking at it is, why don't we just get a friggin' permit to go out on the highway and be done with it? Because I don't, I don't like the idea, I don't like the idea, number one, going through Mac Mollin's land to get to a road.
Let me further explain.
How do you know they're not going to give us the permit? Did somebody at the state tell you they're not gonna give us a permit?
They said it is.
Because that's what you're just saying.
I said.
You just said, we're not gonna get a permit.
I said it's highly unlikely you're gonna get a permit, and four reasons. Number one, they very rarely permit access onto a state road right across from a federal interstate on and off ramps. Number two, there's a six hundred foot sight distance, you don't meet that there. Number three, XL Energy has a high line that runs there, and they have a height restriction for vehicles going in and out for electricity transmitting, and you're gonna be running tankers in and out of there, hauling sludge out of there. Number four, they're going to do a study from, on highway thirty-eight because of the increased traffic from I twenty-nine to Humboldt, and until that study is done, they are not gonna be granted new access, and that study takes a year.
How far on four sixty-four, how far to the west do you live?
He doesn't live west, he lives.
All right, I'm just gonna call this out right now, this is not on the agenda.
Right, yeah, we're gonna.
This is not an agenda item, if we wanna discuss this. If we want to discuss this, it needs to be placed on the agenda as an agenda item.
Yep, and we're working on getting answers. That's it. We're moving forward. Theresa, you got anything for your report?
Just a couple highlights, as in my report there, does it, you know, Mickelson Road, we finally got FEMA approval for everything, so that project, we just need to notify any affected property owners and that project will be complete finally. At least it's some work in progress that will be coming up on future agendas. Just want to let you know, cannabis update, I did receive our first application yesterday. It is for a cultivation and a dispensary and a manufacturing site. Staff will review it now in the next couple of weeks and it'll come before you guys. That's first meeting in December, so we'll go through that. And then just want to let you know, we, we did hire one part-time snow removal help. So far, we've only gotten in one application, but Jeff Vanoverbeek is going to be hired again. He's been with us last three years, four years, something like that, and so he'll be on again, of course. That's all the candidates you have questions about what I had in my report.
Perfect. Any questions for Theresa? We're going to talk a little bit about updating on building inspector.
Yes, so under my report, I just was going to let you know, just to give you a short little update now is that last week, me and Nate, the city administrator in Lenox, interviewed four applicants for the position. I can go, I'm going to request that we go into personnel and executive, kind of talk a little more in depth with it though, but we did have good interviews and a couple of possible candidates out of there. The other thing I'd like to discuss in relation to that is possibly purchasing another staff vehicle that this person could utilize. We kind of brought it up a couple, three meetings ago when we first talking about the position. Just want to know if the council's open to looking into that. You know, this person will be, you know, they'll be traveling Hartford to Lenox, sometimes there'll be a Hartford day and they'll have to run over there to do an inspection or vice versa. They'll be out and about town with code enforcing. They're going to put on a lot of mileage and will be paying out a lot of mileage if we have them use their own vehicle. I know insurance reasons wise, we've had this discussion before, that if we're out doing city business, they recommend to use a city vehicle, so if the council is open to it, could we possibly start looking for, you know, we thought maybe we'd possibly find something for around 15,000, 15, 20,000 maybe, and if we find something, come back to you guys to, to get approval for it.
Maybe you need to hire the person first.
Okay, and we can do that and.
Anyway.
Well, I'd hate to buy a car and then I'd end up.
Well, no, true. Amy runs around a lot.
So in anywhere with the job description, what they noted that there would be a staff vehicle provided.
Well, we told them during the interviews that it was discussed, nothing has been decided and we haven't purchased anything. We did let them know that it was brought up during, you know, one of our council meetings and we're discussing that, so.
It's going to take longer to hire the right person than it is by cover.
Oh, yeah, probably, so.
That's, I mean, that's just my two cents.
Yeah.
Well, I would tell you that I am not in favor of us completely providing the staff vehicle and everything that is related to that at best. I would consider a sharing with Lenox for the staff vehicle and insurance at best. I, I am not in favor of this.
And, and of course, Nate has his own council to go to, but he has brought this up to his council and, and they're not against doing some kind of cost share. We haven't gone into any further detail just because we haven't even discussed it yet, so.
That's why I think you need to hire the person first.
Okay, and we can do that in the future.
We'll hold on that. All right.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Any questions for Theresa? If not, we're going to go to old business and talk about our redistricting proposal for our voting wards here in Hartford because of our increased population.
Yeah. So in the packet, and we looked at these about a month ago, you know, with the new census, we're required to redistrict our wards if we need to, to kind of help even out our population. We can't deviate more than 10% from one ward to another ward. So CCOG put together three possible alternatives for us to look at for that redistricting. We looked at them about a month ago. It was pointed out that alternative two was kind of a rendition that we liked. It's, we, we asked for a couple of changes to that and so an alternative four was provided for you guys. If you remember with alternative two, it kind of had that pink color, kind of like a little finger sticking up there that we thought looked kind of odd and we wanted to redistribute that. So they did that and came up with alternative four that's in your packet. I kind of like this one. It's a little bit more clear cut definition between the wards, plus it still keeps us under any, under that 10% deviation from one ward to the other ward. It keeps the current city council members still in their same wards. And then the other thing I like about this is ward three currently has the lowest population. That though also has the most active development, so we know that'll probably grow the fastest. So before the next 10 year, we'll probably do some gaining there, so probably help even that up over the next few years before we have to redo this again, so.
The other thing, I mean, ward, ward one is even lower than ward two and there's going to be.
Some development up there. Exactly. Yep, so I mean, that's, I think this rendition is sitting it pretty good. If, if we like it, we still need to redistrict by ordinance. We still need to lay it out by ordinance, so I mean, we, if we do like it, we can put it in ordinance form and obviously we've got to go through first and second reading, so we'll talk about it two more times as well, but just wondering if this is something that, if you like this one and want to put it in ordinance form or we want to see some other changes?
Do you want a motion to put it in ordinance?
Yeah, if you did, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we have city staff draft an ordinance for alternative four.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, go ahead.
So the, the only thing that concerns me about is looking at our total deviation, that is a significant percentage.
Yeah, the highest deviation, yeah.
But it's under 10, it's under 10% LeVon and ward three is going to be the one with all the growth for the next 10 years, or a lion's share of the growth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the whole picture. I mean, I'm not looking at my board or anything else, I'm just looking at the deviation and that is just a point I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, but I, I'm looking at it doing that by design though because I think ward three is going to grow faster. You know, ward two probably won't hardly grow at all for the most part over the next 10 years and ward, ward one will grow, I think, slowly because of NAPS landing, but all the developments out there in the ASAM development is, is the way I look at it, so. I think that deviation is going to get a lot smaller as the years go on.
I agree.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they got to start this out with the audience, so they.
We have a second or not?
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
LeVon, second.
LeVon, second.
Anything else? Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. All right, new business. First up is approval of bid, to bid out Western Avenue Sewer Project.
I'm making that motion to go to bid.
I'll second. Any discussion?
How do you think they'll come back, Dave?
Do you have a timeline on it?
I think you're asking how they're going to come back.
When?
Oh, when they're going to come back.
I mean, if we, if we put it out in November, when, when, well, you put it out there for what, two months?
We, no, we only got to advertise it twice. Yeah, I put in my report, I mean, should I give you the exact dates? Yeah, so we'll advertise it, we'll publish it, the 20th, November 26th and December 3rd and we have bid opening on the 14th and I'll come to you guys the second meeting in December, the bids.
Really, that quick, though?
Yeah.
Is that a good thing to turn it back quick to, or?
Bidding, we, we're required to advertise it twice for bidding. If you want it to be longer, we can.
But that, that advertisement then is advertised for how many weeks?
Two, so a lot, yeah, yeah. That's what's required by law. I mean, you can go longer.
It seems, it seems like we're going out in November a little early.
It is, it is pretty early.
But we're talking pipe prices going back up and beginning of the year significantly again, another big hike later in the year, so.
I, yeah, I don't mind the, the timing and the two weeks nowadays, the way contractors can get ahold of electronic plans, they can, if they're going to see it, they can, they can get ahold of them pretty quick.
And it's pretty straightforward, project tubes, no roads or any movement, just sewer and water.
And I don't think it's any crazy pipe sizes either, which should be pretty standard, but we're definitely seeing the pipe prices on non-standard pipe types are expensive.
Non-standard.
I think we're thinking the sooner the better.
Yeah.
All right.
These, these estimates were Stockwell's?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and it does include, you know, we added that portion of 12th Street, the water sewer that's going from Oaks over to NAPS Landing, their property line, so.
So who, who designed it? Is Stockwell's?
Stockwell's. Yeah, because we added it to their project because they already had the other one already totally designed.
Who put it out with it? Is Stockwell's put it out with it?
Yes. Yeah, because we, when we did this switch, we kept, this was basically all designed and we were just sitting on it because we.
They had the contract done.
Right.
And they'd done the easement work and.
Yep, 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 and we were just kind of, we're sitting on to see kind of how we came out with that storm shelter grant and then.
Well, and because Arden brings up a good point, because that, that easement or right away, that goes away after.
Yep, we, we need to get going on this next year. Yeah, because there only is a two-year window on that.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it seems like it's been a while since we talked on.
Yep.
Any more discussion on this? Not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Second item, request release 2021 budget.
I moved it, I moved it to the table list for the next meeting.
I'll second. We don't discuss that, do we?
Right, no, just vote on it.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Eric.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm yes.
At the next meeting, I would like, is there three entities? I would like a representative from each one of those entities here because I have a question to ask.
Okay.
Okay.
Next up, approve the lease agreement on billboard number two, West facing.
I'd most approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's just the standard.
Standard agreement.
Yep, yep, no changes to it, it's our standard.
Three years or three, does that mean?
Three.
Three years.
Depending on three year.
Not an old billboard for instance.
Yep, and it would be one that eastbound, so if you're going into Sioux Falls, it's a west face, but it's eastbound.
All right. No more discussion, we'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. The next two items Theresa and I discussed today, review the insurance quotes, we're going to table that because you're still waiting on one of the votes, correct?
I'm making a motion to table.
And just to let you know, I, I got the quote at 4:30 tonight, but since we don't have a full council, let's, let's table it anyway, so.
All right, let's vote on that one. Randall?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm yes.